All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order for February 8th, 2018, for the school, North Andover School Committee. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded, and silence your cell phones, and all those types of things. We, we'll start with, any public comment? Public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our student report from Caitlin Dolly.
Hi, guys. So, not too much going on, but actually today, in fact, the ski team won yet another regular undefeated season, which is pretty impressive. And then, four robotics teams have actually qualified for regionals, so I'm pretty good on the competition front at North Andover. And then, just with Valentine's Day coming up, we have some different fundraisers. I know that Student Council did a matchmaking survey. I know that there will probably be carnations being sold, and actually, at 6:30 on Valentine's Day, the Drama Guild is putting on a Charlie Brown Valentine as a fundraiser, especially for like, any families who want to do something all together, so we'll be selling tickets at school, and then also at the door, so.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you for making the big report.
Have a great night, you guys.
You too. Thanks, Caitlin. Okay. So, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We do have some minutes to approve from the last meeting.
Make the motion to approve the minutes from January 25th, as they're printed in the packet.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witski Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be a 4-0. Okay. So, for my report, briefly, I wanted to thank the Subcommittee who brought us three fantastic finalists for the principal of the North Andover Middle School. Three of us have actually attended two of the three coffees for parents to meet these candidates, and I know that they've been, each spent a day so far in the middle school, working with the two of you, and looking forward to meeting the last candidate next Tuesday. And I really thank the Committee for all the work they did on bringing such great candidates forward. And also, I'd like to invite our guest this evening, Mark DeSalvo, who's town moderator, asked if he might make a little comment here, and I told him I'd invite him up during my session here.
Thank you very much. I'll just take a quick moment of your time.
You can leave him to three minutes. Town meeting was three minutes.
Put on the clock.
I just put my clock down, too.
Get the clock.
Go ahead, start the clock. Are you ready?
I'm on it.
Tell me when.
Okay, give me one second.
I had it open, I just threw it on the floor.
We'll get you there.
We're teasing, go ahead.
She's not teasing at all, and I totally understand that.
It's started. You're on.
I'm sorry, when I begin my remarks? No.
Reset, start.
We had a, we had a pretty large community event last Tuesday, and I wanted to come and speak to the school committee about the school department, and I'll speak next week about the ministry department to the Board of Slicken. But no department in our community was as burdened by the judgment and the necessity of having a town meeting, and the day that it, that we had it, because of the legal restrictions that we had, than the school department. And I wanted the community and you to be aware that that was, A, not only the truth, but the enormous grace and cooperation that was afforded by the school department deserves to be mentioned. Not only did we commandeer the fieldhouse for three days, and cause numerous changes in athletic scheduling, track practice, basketball games, lots of club and other events, drama practices, that needed to be accommodated and, and, and canceled, very frankly, but it was done because we had, as the school department recognized, this overriding civic obligation. Not one that was welcomed, but one that existed in any circumstance. Once again, for the seventh time, the Community Schools Program volunteered childcare, and it was well-attended and greatly appreciated by the populace that I talked to. Much thanks to Mr. Galant. I want to say thank you and apologies to Chad Jackson, the principal of the high school, for the burden and, and difficulties that we put on you and him and, and your colleagues, and I thank you for that. Students, a dozen students, more than a dozen students, I think from mostly AP government classes, came and participated. Folks, kids who are not even eligible to vote, who are aiding in, in providing the ease for other people to vote, and that's a truly selfless act, and one that's appreciated. We started the evening, as you may recollect, with appreciating the raised standards and the 10th anniversary, anniversary of the respectful Community Schools Program. And I will tell you, as I heard from community members, that recognizing and seeing the example of elementary school children, knowing the obligations of respect and empathy and every other bit of that acronym, helped afford a much more respectful and, and union of community, if you will, that could have been a much more difficult experience. And lastly, I need to call out your Chief Operating Officer, Jim Neely, who was, there's no other word, unflappable throughout. Every challenge, he faced with grace. Every single time that I needed good counsel, and I needed lots of good counsel, he provided it. Every single time there was a circumstance that blew up our plans and something else needed to be done, he just exhibited everything that you would expect from a professional that isn't often provided. He, his staff, the custodians, custodians, other people in the school department were just more than exemplary, and they were absolutely led by the example that Jim Neely presented, and I needed to say thank you. How's my time?
3:51.
Oh, thank you very much. Alas, you couldn't gavel me down. Thank you very much, Jim.
My appreciation. Thank you all.
No talk of satanic drug dealers there.
Okay, and that's, those are the comments that I had.
So, the only thing I have to add for my superintendent's report is a lot of, we're going to have some really good conversation tonight, which I really am looking forward to. I did go to Urantown last weekend, and it was fantastic, and even though they had some bumps in the road in terms of their schedule, I thought they did a fantastic job, and it was really a wonderful, a wonderful show. And, Mr. Gilligan, want to just give a quick update on the assistant superintendent search process, so folks know where we are on that?
Yeah, so we have quite a committee with community members, teachers, administrators, parents, looking for our new assistant superintendent, and the pool was probably one of the strongest pools, again, a lot like the middle school pool. And at this time, we will be interviewing 13 candidates, starting next Monday, so I'm really pleased with how strong it is, and it's quite a group of sitting assistant superintendents, curriculum directors, and several principals, so.
And our goal is to have an appointment by mid to late March?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have. Very good. Do we have a school building committee update, Mr. Trissey?
Sure, real quick. Madam Chair, we, school building committee met last Wednesday. It was the first time that the school building committee met with our contracted triumph, so it was kind of an introductory meeting. Went over the proposed schedule. They've proposed a couple changes. They want to mobilize a lot sooner than we had, than the original schedule had anticipated. A lot of that will be weather deter, determined, so hopefully, they'll get in here end of March. That's when they want to start mobilizing on the ground. Thought the meeting was pretty good. We have another meeting coming up next, next Tuesday night, as well, so things are still moving ahead, still on schedule. Jim or Jenny want to add anything to that?
We had a good meeting around kind of the logistics with Mary Lou and Judy on Tuesday, as we talk about mobilization. We have to talk about traffic patterns and signage and communication, and entrances in and out of the ECC, when we're really getting down to the, the nitty-gritty at this point. And I know it's hard to imagine, but we will soon start to see it, and we're really down at the, the level of detail, you know? Where is this door going to be located from and to, so?
And also, our, our traffic engineer, TEC, had a great, great meeting with Mass Highway last week, so they're, they feel very comfortable with what we're proposing, and what we hope to do there.
Do you guys have any sense of, I know there's going to be some groundwork done, you said sometime this spring, how much lead time are you trying to plan to give the community, the public who have to go through there before that is, is put into place?
Yeah, so we were working with INGA Knox and, from NV5, to really come up with, we're going, we're going to have two traffic patterns. One, when we mobilize, and then one, once we get the additional exit out of the middle school. And we're going to have maps of those and send those out with enough time, and really try highly, high levels of communication around it. And then signage, I would assume the first few days, Jim and I will be out there.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we've thought a lot about the different aspects of it. The reality is, until, we're going to just have to be flexible.
Right, but giving people in advance, knowing how it's going to go.
Yep, and we, we're trying to get visuals of it, too, so people can see it.
That's great.
Very good.
Sure, and I, if you guys don't mind, I want to go back to one other report for me that I forgot to actually ask Ms. Bacard, if you had any update, I don't know if you do or not, about the, um, school naming?
Um, no, we've had two meetings, and we've done some deliberating, and we're starting to fashion a recommendation, and I expect that we'll be back on March 1st with recommendations and, and ready to, to have this body deliberate and get ready to vote.
Exciting stuff.
I'm imagining that you're probably going to have a, a first and second read on that, the first, the first night we'll, we'll present it, and then the, March 15th would be the vote, that would be my guess. So, moving along.
Great, thank you. Sorry, I forgot about that.
The committee's terrific, and, you know, reading these, reading these stories and histories, and, and holding them with honor and care, and it's, it's really a very, we're, we're learning so much about North Andover.
Great, thank you very much. You were all set? We did that already, okay. So, we did talk about doing new business first, right?
If you guys would indulge us a little.
I think that makes sense, we have a lot of guests, and some of the items on the new business really will help us with the old business, we think, so. Do you want to start with the discussion of class rank?
Turn it over to Mr. Nugent and Mr. Jackson.
That works great, yeah? Please. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, if you'll pause just for a second, we're just checking that, we got word that it's not being televised for some reason, so we just want to double check.
That's quite right.
Mrs. Arden, Mr. Marius texted?
No, I don't.
Speaking of stories, so I think we can continue, and we are, they're trying to get it on.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thanks for checking. Okay.
You come in, I walk out, I didn't even.
Your work, your study.
Thanks for having us here. Just to back up a little bit, this summer, as part of our leadership retreat, one of the topics that Dr. Price let us talk about was the class rank review process, and more specifically, we talked about ways in which North Andover High School can better represent all students to the colleges and university at which they're applying to. And I just want to kind of set the stage, because the only part of this that I kind of went and drafted out a timeline, to kind of get some documents out to the public, out to our parents, have some, a packed breakfast where we could kind of engage the community in some dialogue. We developed some frequently asked questions that Mr. Nugent will go over there, but him and his department and some parents back a few years ago have been the driving force to this, and I think there's some very good comments and some testimonials that will really help support, in a way, we want to go to help our students as they move forward.
So, I'll cut to the punchline, and then I'll backtrack and give you the history. So, it's my hope that tonight, I'm presenting enough evidence to help people understand that we would like to move away from class rank at North Andover High School, starting with the current junior class, which is the class of 2019. So, rewind to the fall of 2015, and a gentleman by the name of Drew Carter, who's the Associate Director of Admissions at Holy Cross, spoke in front of our faculty. I had brought Drew in to really talk about college recommendations, and really give our staff a little bit more insight as to what the, the things they should be talking about, the things they shouldn't. And he led off with a comment that really had everyone scratching their heads and asking me questions afterwards, and his exact words were, "If we choose to," let me get right here, yeah, "if we choose to continue to rank students, we're putting our students, our vast majority of students, at a clear disadvantage when applying to college." So, that statement alone is a little bit, obviously, it's a shock and awe, and a lot of people, like myself, who grew up with a class rank and, and traditional, that statement alone tends to cause a lot of people to scratch their heads. As we, again, this was the fall of 2015, for the last two and a half years, we put together a committee. There were three parents, a couple of guidance counselors, and we did extensive research. We met with almost 100 colleges who came through our doors over the course of the two academic years. We did a lot of research online, we, a lot of anecdotal stories. So, the things that I came up with, I think, in, in a nutshell, class rank alone will not necessarily by itself help students to get into college, but by itself, it would potentially eliminate a lot of students from, from a college acceptance. And I can get into a lot more specifics, and I, and I'll try not to take too much time, but I, I think, as we peeled a couple of layers, we found out that the top 15 schools in Massachusetts, as reported by the Boston.com 2016 report, the top 15 schools in Massachusetts as identified by Boston Magazine, were not ranking their students. So, you know, for me, a little bit of, it's kind of like a, a brand, you know, we aspire to be like a lot of these schools, and, and that's the direction we're heading, so why are we continuing to rank students? As I talked to more parents, one specific instance stuck out with me, which was just alone with, when it came to scholarship opportunities. So, I, the, in specifics, there are many colleges out there that use class rank simply to determine whether or not a student's eligible for certain aid. If the school that that student comes from, the high school that that student comes from, does not rank, they'll throw that out, and they'll focus on other things. Maybe standardized test scores, maybe recommendations, things like that. In this specific instance, it was Clemson University, one of my students who ran track for me, and, and I was working very closely with him, very painful conversation I had with, with his mom, and basically, because he met all the other academic requirements, but because he was in the top 13% of the class, and not 12, 10% of the class, he was ineligible for, I think it was $60,000 is what I have, it was $15,000 a year. So, $60,000 over the course of a four-year degree, which is significant, and I think we would all agree.
Yes.
So, so for us, and I just want, let me throw you a, a couple of stats that I looked at this afternoon. So, the difference, so we've got a class of 360, at the, a class of 2018 at the high school this year. The difference between just the number 10 student and the number 11 student in the class is 17 thousandths of a point. The top 10% to a top 11% is 11, 11 thousandths of a point. So, there's a very marginal difference between these students, and it really could have come down to one student, really not, probably not an A or an A-, it was probably an elective that weighed in, that something that the other student chose to take, and, because they were interested in it. I'm going to keep going if it's okay.
Yes.
So, peeling a couple more layers, just talking to a, a couple of students who have been in the top 10 more recently, and their parents, and the, the anecdotal stuff that they shared with me was, you know, being a dad, being a guy who embraces our, our social-emotional learning at the, at the, in the district level, from a guidance perspective, and these are some of the comments that I got. The, both parents and students who were involved in this, in the hunt for that top stu, that top position, the angst, the pressure to always perform, the, even some students, a couple of them reported not even caring senior year about their rank, because they were so exhausted by the hunt. And, you know, the summation from all of this was that a, a lot of them were focused on their destination, and the, and the strategy involved to get to that destination, rather than the journey, and rather than the meaningfulness of an education. And I think we've got a, this, people on both sides of the ta, table with our trimester schedule, but one of the beautiful things about our trimester schedule at the high school is that students have the opportunity to take many classes that they want to take, and they desire to take, and maybe it helps them formulate what they might want to do when they get out of North Andover High School. These students who are in that fight, for the quest for that number one spot, the number two spot, or the top, whatever it would be, I, I think many of them, the ones I talked to and their families, they, they lost that message, and they were just solely focused on what courses could give me the biggest bang for my buck. Now, I am not going to minimize the quest, I mean, obviously, we want the best for our students, and obviously, a lot of colleges are requesting that, but for me, I'd like to have my cake and eat it, too. So, I know that, based on, the, the last thing I'll share with you is, is a little bit of research we did recently, and just to give you perspective, the common data set, the common data set is a, it's, it's statistical information that's organized based on all colleges that have received applications, and it, and it goes through, I mean, it, it, it gets very nitpicky, but there's one line specifically that focuses on the number of students who are applying to colleges from high schools that rank. So, I just picked our top 10 schools over the last 10 years. These schools are UMass Amherst, UMass Lowell, UNH Northeastern, UConn, UVM, BU, Salem State, URI, and Quinnipiac. Those 10 schools, two of them, the data was not available, but for the other eight, there were only two of them that had higher than a 50% of high school students who were applying to their colleges that came from a school that ranked. In fact, there's three of them that have, two of them that have 25%, UVM and BU. BU, one of the schools that receives the most applications in the country, but only 25% of the students who apply there came from a school that ranked. So, for me, you know, there's a lot of data to support, I could probably talk about this for, for a long time, but I, I just wanted to share this, you know, obviously, this is something I'm very passionate about, it's something I've been very passionate about my entire career, but for the last two and a half years, we've invested a lot of time to try to prepare for tonight, and share this with you.
And can I specifically explain what we're asking you to do? So, there's no school committee policy around class rank. In fact, the student handbook, its only reference to class rank is, look at the program of studies. I have here for you the program of studies, which does say that we do class rank. So, what we would be asking is for a vote of, a vote of confidence, or even approval to do this, but the real vote would become when we approve the program of studies, which we will do later in the spring. So, this would be removed from the programs of studies, would be the actual way mechanically to have this happen, but we would, thought it was very important to bring it to the school committee and to the community before we even just said, okay, we have a new program of studies, and we've taken out class rank. But we wanted to get your kind of support of this, a vote of support potentially, and then the actual change would be solely within the program of studies. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Any questions for, did you have any else, Mr. Jackson, or?
Yeah, no, I think, said up there, I just think it doesn't prohibit us from identifying, someone in the frequently asked questions document that we shared, it doesn't prohibit us from identifying specific students that we're going to award, awards to at the end of the year, whether it be the top two students for a superintendent's award, or to go to a scholarship banquet. We're still able to do that in a, in a positive way. It doesn't prohibit us from doing that.
If I can add to that, too, so for a family of a student who is, maybe, they think they might be in the top one or two, or even the top 10, it, this, if we were to move away from ranking students officially, it wouldn't prohibit a guidance counselor from putting into a recommendation that had Helen, had, North Andover has no longer ranked students, however, had, had, if we still did, Helen would be one of our top two students, or would be our top student, or.
Oh, no. You don't have a very high class.
So, I think, you know, we can share that in, in, in other forms, but if we, you know, it would be whether or not we had an official policy on it.
So, Mr. Jackson, just before questions, you've done a lot of conversations about this, so can you just tell the school committee the conversations you've had, and, you know, this is not coming out of the blue for at least the high school committee?
Yeah, no, I think in trying to put this together, and I referenced at the start, and, you know, we had a pack meeting, had to get rescheduled because of the snow, but we had great turnout. I know Amy was there, Helen was there, Kim behind me was there, and we had some great dialogue with that. I think I sent it out in a couple different parent messages, just the proposal, the proposal document that I think's being shared on TV as well, as well, and I think we've talked about it, shared it with our leadership teams, tried to get it out in the community to our other elementary school principals, just so that if they're hearing dialogue on it, we'd have some talking points as to why it benefited our students, and, you know, I've only received positive feedback back from parents in the community, and other staff members in the community, so, you know, we try to do our due diligence in, in soliciting information, having that dialogue, and it's been positive.
Not one negative comment about it?
No, real, no, really, not, not an email.
Just one mom.
Yeah, maybe, I, I yield back to Kim if you're looking for some more anecdotal detail, but, but as far as, but as far as contacting me, not one, not one, no.
So, I noticed in here, you said it doesn't preclude you from identifying speakers for graduation, not for this year, I'm talking about for next year? How, what factors would you put into that? Or would you still have speakers?
So, a couple, like, what Chad had mentioned earlier, there's a, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce, we, they invite our top 5% to that dinner in May every year, so we would still need to determine who the top 5% were. We wouldn't have to give them their rank, though. I think the plan would be that we would still have, for now, the, the plan would be that we would have two speakers or three speakers at the graduation, and more than likely, it would be the top students academically, but again, I, I don't want to get ahead of myself, I think that, those are things that are still, I think that they're still so much part of the, the fabric of this culture and the school community, we, we wouldn't, it's not what I'm proposing here tonight.
Yeah, it's not something for this year, we'd make that change, I think.
Right, I realize that, I'm just thinking long-term.
But I think it, we'd be open to having dialogue to that, if that's something the community would be looking, looking to, but it's not to do now.
And having run a school that didn't have class rank, we just allowed every kid to apply, and depicts the best speeches. And they did practice speeches, and then we decided, and, so, because I think student voice at graduation is incredibly important, but it doesn't have to be, you know, there are some incredible speakers about their experience who are not number one or two. That's great.
I've heard some incredible speeches from our class president.
Yep.
It's typically about a speaker and not.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think over time, there are lots of options.
I also have heard, I don't think it's, it might be a college thing, but where the student body votes on somebody that they'd like to have speak to them, or on their behalf, which is interesting, too.
Cool. Any questions from any of you, or comments? Mr. Trissey, do you have anything?
No, just with the parent, the parent question, I, I assume that the kids are cool with this, too, I guess?
Yeah, Steve, more from on your side of it, too.
I would, I would think they would be, but.
I think when they, it's funny, the initial statement is like, wait a minute, once they hear the information, it would actually absolutely then favor. Nobody, the, just so you know, that we don't give a student, a school rank out to the students until the summer prior to their senior year. So, nobody at the high school has a rank right now, except for the current senior class. And that's why I would recommend, if, you know, this is something that we would, would endorse, we would move forward right away, without having to delay.
You know, and from the student perspective, I, I have a senior in the high school this year, and so, and I've, I've had another child go through, and you've got to remember that two-thirds of the kids in the school are the bottom two-thirds of the class. So, it, it doesn't do anybody's ego any good, you know, to say I'm, I'm lower than 50%. You know, 50% of the kids are the bottom half, you know what I mean? So, it doesn't help those students in any appreciable way, you know, either socio-emotionally, or getting into college-wise, it's really, I don't think it'll be missed, I don't think students will, will miss that.
Just, hopefully, this backs that point up, that the student who has a three, there's one of them, has a 3.0 GPA right now, is number 284 in our current senior class.
Right.
That just doesn't make sense, it doesn't add up, so it doesn't, it, so without rank, they're going to focus more on the strength of our school, the strength of what we do, what we, who we roll out as a North Andover High School student, and I think that's going to benefit more of our students than this number.
And the feedback we've gotten from Holy Cross and other schools is that our profile out in the college community is a very good one.
Holly, Johnny, Coates?
No, makes sense to me.
So, as you can see, Mr. McDevitt's not here today, but he did send me a little thing. So, he just said that his only concern is the commu, and I, I would echo this, and we probably all would, the communication that goes out to the North Andover High School community, and as well as the middle school, since they're coming up. I know that you, you've mentioned there have been the pack meetings, you've put it in your monthly report, and as we've seen through other newsletters, like, I just, I recently talked to someone at the middle school who didn't realize that Dr. Quaid was retiring, so, shockingly, people don't always get the memo.
True, true.
So, I think you have to.
Continue to.
Beat it into the ground, so that people really know, and find as many ways as possible to announce that, particularly with the, the current junior class, because they're the first ones to go down this road, and so, that's what Andrew said, and I would agree with that, being an important step. Personally, I love it, I think it's great. I grew up in a high school that did not have rank, we went to great colleges, it was fine, and everybody actually did know their rank somehow, I don't know, but it was not published. But I, I think what you said, Mr. Nugent, that I really liked is, or troubled me was the fact that students choose not to take classes that really interest them, because they're afraid it's going to screw up their GPA. That's a demotivator, and that's unfortunate, and I would hate to see that. So, thank you for mentioning that specifically. Sounds like we're enthusiastic.
Yeah, so, what I thought was if, at the next meeting, just to follow our protocol, if we could just do a vote of support.
Sounds right.
I think it's important, given that this is a significant enough change in this I think it's important, given that this is a significant enough change in this community, that it not, that it be a joint effort.
Absolutely.
And I, and I will just say that I am in full support, and I know Mr. Gilligan is in full support of this, as we think it's best for kids. And in true disclosure, when I first came here, and if you remember, when someone told me you all still had class rank, my jaw hit the floor. And I understood that there were many things that needed to be addressed in North Andover, and this may not be the first on the list, but I'm very pleased to still be the superintendent when it is eliminated, because I think in so many ways, it's better for kids.
Since we're going to be meeting not till March first, if anybody watching, any parents or have any questions, certainly contact Mr. Nugent, Mr. Jackson, and we have some parents here. Any parents interested in commenting on this now? There's public comment later, but I would invite you to come out, comment on this now if you'd like, Ms. Hurst.
I'm here to support, I'm here to support. And just in case somebody wasn't going to support, I was here to...
Thank you, thank you. So great, so yes, definitely contact and spread the word, anybody's watching, that this is in the offing.
Thank you for doing all that work.
Yes.
On behalf of the students, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Now we have our discussion about the Learn Anywhere Project.
Lorraine, you need a mic.
Grab your microphone, there, Ms. Marx.
Right into it, yep.
So, Alternative School Days.
So you've probably heard some buzz about this around the state in the last couple of years. And really, we heard it initially in New Hampshire, using the term Blizzard Bag. But as we moved into Massachusetts, you can still go back to... Yeah, you're so good. We're talking about Alternative School Days, and it's really, the Department of Ed looks at it as an alternative structured learning day, as a possible solution to scheduling issues posed by inclement weather. So as you know, this year, we've already had five snow days, and I have some data I'll share with you on past years in terms of snow days. And it really comes down to, when are kids really going to be most productive in terms of learning? Is it going to be in the winter, when they're in the midst of that learning process? Or is it those five days at the end of June, when they're really not so much? So, and having been a principal, having been a teacher at different levels, it's really the same at all levels. Those last days in June, I would not say are top learning days, so...
Particularly for the schools without air conditioning.
Correct.
Which is all of them.
Some of the high schools.
And the ECC.
And the ECC.
I was, when I was principal at Thompson, it was the year that we had a lot of snow days, and we went to the very last Friday in June, and it was hot. And you don't, I mean, you can't always say that, because I used to say that about Field Day. Well, Field Day has to be at the end of June, because it's going to be too cold or whatever. You don't know. One year, we had end, it was hot in March and it was cold in May, you know? You don't know. But it was a hundred and eight degrees in the upstairs classrooms. I mean, no, nobody's really functioning well under those kind of circumstances. So just a little data in terms of North Andover. To date, we've had five snow days. Last year, we had five snow days. The year before, three. The year before, six. The year before that, four. And the year before that, six. And I have data on others that I'm trying to remember, whether it was 2012 or 2014 when I was here. I know one of the days, it was when we still had Good Friday as a holiday, and we elected to come to school on Good Friday to help make up one of those days. Each of those years contains days in February, and most of them contain, contain days in March. So we've been fortunate. It's February eighth, we haven't had a snow day. Yesterday could have been close, good call on Dr. Price's part, I think. But we have more in February. I can remember coming back, ready to come back from February vacation in past years, and the first day back is a snow day. And it is not unusual to have those days in March. Also, in seventeen, eighteen, twelve, thirteen, and eleven, twelve, we had days out in October those years for weather-related issues. I can remember when I was the director at the alternative school, we also had weather-related issues. I think it was maybe around 2010 in May with flooding, because we couldn't take the MCAS. Yeah, couldn't take the MCAS that year. So it isn't always just winter, and it's interesting that more currently, we're seeing those October types of storm days. So how do we, how do we really address that? That's what we're looking at. So DESI requirements. Alternative options have to meet the requirements for structured learning time, which includes a hundred and eighty days, although these alternative days will count in those one-hundred-and-eighty days. And then the learning time, the nine-ninety and the nine-hundred minutes for elementary and secondary levels. Assignments and projects have to be substantial. They can't be like a typical homework assignment, and they have to be accessible to all students. So that's a piece that we really have to look at as we work through this. Involve appropriate teacher oversight and involvement, as I said, not simply a homework assignment. Account for various circumstances. People could be out of power, like they were in October, so you can't assume you're going to submit something on a computer. If you are a Title I student, or a special needs student, or an EL student who might need additional support to do work, that have, that support needs to be provided. And also, even if we didn't say everybody did have power and it was a snow day, you can't assume that all of our families have access to the digital tools. So those are things that need to be considered. We have to clearly communicate what this means to our community, both teachers, students, and parents. You know, you do that through, the other districts that have done it, through websites, community meetings, professional development with your teachers. This needs to be approved by the school committee, but it does not need to be approved by the Department of Ed. So, yeah, so that was, that, I didn't realize that either, initially.
That's a change.
Or that's a recent change in interpretation.
Yes. They want to know, so if we did, in fact, move forward with something like this, the Department of Ed would like to know, because they're kind of keeping tabs on how it's going in different districts. But they don't have to approve it. And they do request that you conduct a survey at the end of the implementation to evaluate the program, to see how it's going. So...
And that'd be a survey to everybody?
Yes, yeah. Parents, teachers, students, yeah, everybody to really look at that.
And that means at the end of the year, or at the end of each day?
No, I think more at the end of the year, to see how it's gone over, you know, over that period of time. So Wakefield, I think, has an exemplary example here. They call it Learn Anywhere, which I like the title as well. And Jen and I went down and met with them, I think it was October. So Dr. Kim Smith is the superintendent there, and it really has led this, and was so, I thought gracious, and willing to share all kinds of information with us, and in fact, continues to be, which I'll talk about a little bit later as well. But, so she shared the website, shared kind of their experiences developing this, talked a lot about how it does differ from the Blizzard Bag, so it's not work that has to be in the next day. You're not, if you, if you all remember some of the things you may have heard, there was like eighty, eighty-five percent compliance. We're not looking at those kind of percentages for compliance for the next day in order to be able to count the day. You're also looking at projects that interest kids, some choice in those projects, so really looking at more learning opportunities that are not as standard and as constricted for students, which I think is what we're trying to do in a lot of ways in our schools. They can develop into twenty-first century learning opportunities, so I don't know that we're looking at all of those pieces immediately, because we're looking at the Alternative School Days initially. But it can grow into summer learning, it can grow into blended classrooms, maybe some opportunities with sharing some coursework through other districts. So there are other opportunities there to expand on this. And just making sure, again, there's clearly delineated guidelines for student work, for the time, for teacher responsibility, for accessibility. An important piece that I think parents will be concerned about, does this require parental support? And it does not. It has to be work that's accessible to the students. So because the students are home for a snow day does not mean that mom or dad has to sit with them for the entire school day and help them do the work. In fact, in Wakefield, they have set up certain time guidelines. So just to, just to get a picture of that, K to two, you're looking at about sixty minutes of work over the course of that, that day or that time to make up that work. Grades three and four is ninety minutes. Grades five through eight are twenty minutes for each class that they would have had that day, because you know, in a middle school, it's on a rotating schedule. And for the high school, it's thirty minutes for each class they would have had that day, again, the rotating schedule. And again, looking at the quality of learning being higher in the winter than it's going to be in late June. So then also, there's guidelines in, in Wakefield anyway, which again, I think is the exemplary example for all other district staff. So just an example, their food service people, they have the option of taking the day without pay. They have the option of reviewing educational videos that the Director of Nutrition has set up in terms of, you know, improving their program. Or to take that time and do it at the end of other days, so they could be stocking shelves or helping to prepare menus, or different options like that. So if, if they choose one of the second two options, not the opting for taking the day off without pay, it does need to be approved through the director. So there's an approval process for all of these things. Principals have a role, your school psychologists have a role, and they have delineated all of this. So really, everybody in the school has a role, and it's clearly outlined what the expectation for that day would be. So... Also, some question, I know I've heard people say, well, does that mean the superintendent is going to call school off more often? And you really don't see that happening. If it's safe to be in school, kids are in school. And I know, and I'm sure Jen could speak to this, but superintendents talk to one another too about, you know, what are the roads in the area? What is your best guess? Because I know with this...
Conversations this morning at four-thirty AM.
Yeah. With this last storm, it was all over the news about what a tough thing that is for superintendents to have to do, is to make that call, and how nervous you are. I mean, Jen had to make that call about yesterday, which I think was wise the day before, because it gives parents a chance. But they're communicating, these decisions are not made lightly, so I think that that's important as well.
I can also ensure that the incoming superintendent would much rather have his children in school that way. So I wouldn't worry about extra days off.
And I'm going to ask Jim, do you mind just going back to the previous slide? They also did a lot of work with the union, they vetted this with the union, they got a lot of feedback. I know that our union had actually sent a note saying, gee, is this something you'd be willing to think about? And we had already had the conversation about coming here. I did meet with Ryan Landry, Jen had talked to him, he and I met, and he was reaching out to the union president in Wakefield, just to get some information from him, and he'll share that as well, once they do connect. But could you click on the Learn Anywhere, just to give you, just some ideas, yeah, what it looks like?
No, I didn't notice that was hot-wired.
So, and then if you go to, let me see, of course, I don't have my glasses on. I don't know if that'll help. Yeah, try the distance learning, yeah.
Just one?
Yeah. And then, find my assignment. So if you go to the Woodville School, if you scroll down and just go to Woodville School, right there at the end of the elementary list, and go to grade two. Just to kind of give you an example of what it looks like there right now. So they have your, you have your teachers, you have some assignment options. Some of this is connected digitally. But again, it does not have to be done the next day. There are ways that students can access this through the schools as well, when they're back at school. Someone might not have power that day, as we said, so there are different options. If you go back and just take a look, go back to, go back to the school list, just try to give you a picture at each level. And go to the middle school.
Good drive, Jen.
Yeah. And go to eighth grade. I like eighth grade, the teachers clearly have a sense of humor if the pictures come up. Yeah, so, so you have an idea what assignments look like there in eighth grade. So they do do, use a lot of Google Classroom, which a lot of our teachers do, especially at the middle school and the high school. But I like their sense of humor. So you can get an idea how it's all set up.
Very polite.
And then you can go back and click on the high school, although most of the high school actually looks like it, when I look through, was hooked up to Google Classroom as well. And there are things on here that we don't have access to yet, but Dr. Smith is willing to share all of what she's done with us, and has also, Jen had reached out to her, she is willing to consult with us over the course of the summer to help us learn from what she's done. I mean, and she said basically, you can use what I've done. And when someone's done such a fabulous job, I don't know that we need to recreate the whole wheel.
Dr. Smith is retiring at the end of the year, and we reached out to her and said, I said, Kim, would you be willing to help us out? And she said, and I said, of course, we would compensate you. And she said, I'm happy to help, and you can't pay me.
Yeah, yeah. Which was very nice.
Good answer.
So what you, what you won't see on this list in terms of classrooms are all the pieces for like the school psychologist and all that. I have some of that written down, but clearly, that's all outlined, you know, whether it's going over IEPs, reading reports, writing reports, all these things that so many of our teachers really are doing hours and hours outside of school, and are specialists. The EL teacher has a site here, and they have special books and things that they have the kids reading. The reading specialists have a site there, again, reinforcing reading, read with your parents if you can, if not, do this. And so they, you know, a lot of, a lot of different options, which I won't take you all through right now, but it's clearly very, very well thought out. So, and they, the part of the principal's job, they have different principals each time, are auditing how it's going. So at the end of this year, she's going to have a lot of information that she, she's willing to share with us and other districts. When Jen and I went down in October, there were a few other superintendents down there getting some information as well.
Is this their first year rollout right now?
This is their first year rollout, yeah.
So they're going to do some feedback at the end, like you suggested?
Yeah. Okay. These are just some other districts using alternatives for school days, so obviously you need Wakefield, Burlington, Melrose, Revere, North Middlesex, Westfield, some out in the central part of the state, you're Ludlow, you're Orange, Granby, Petersham. So, and there are other districts as well, you know, I'm hunting around a little bit to find out if there's any more districts closer to us, and what sort of success they're having as well. But there are a lot of districts trying this now. So, and they try it in different ways. Some are doing all snow days, some are doing, you know, after the first two snow days, so there are different options as well. So, and then, so the last superintendent's snow day challenge was to write what, a recommendation you would have if you were superintendent for the day. So Jen shared all of those with me, and they were great. First of all, I was impressed by the number of students who actually participate in this. So then, when I started to put this together, I said to her, this is like a precursor for doing this work. And I really, like, like I said, I was amazed at the number of students who did participate from kindergarten, who you had pizza with recently. I couldn't resist. His was more books. So how could someone who does literacy resist that one? And then a high school student who had the counterargument in her essay, which is part of what we wrote in terms of the challenge.
Recession for high school students.
Yeah. I thought she did a really good job.
Did a great job.
She cited a lot of really good research, so...
That's great.
So I felt like we already had kind of a, an entryway here, you know, this isn't totally foreign. So really leads into it. And then, just kind of the next step, so I wanted to present this information to you, let you know what some other districts are doing, hopefully answer some of the kind of top questions that come to your mind right away. So our next steps would really be to have you discuss whether you felt that was something you could support us moving forward in terms of investigating and bringing forth a proposal. And if you did, we would develop a committee to work on that proposal, work with Dr. Smith and our union as well, to present something, and hopefully be able to do something next year with that. And it would involve really looking at some of our PD time in terms of getting our teachers And it would involve really looking at some of our PD time, in terms of getting our teachers ready for all of this as well, so.
Very thorough. Any questions?
I actually do have a few questions.
Yeah.
First one on the parental support, how could it not involve parental support? I mean, for many of us who have kids that need to be redirected, and, you know, school's one thing, the teachers are there, when they're at home, even for homework and having to stay on top of them, how can parents who oftentimes on these snow days are working from home and actually have to get work done, or kids that are left with childcare or sitters, how, how can they be supported? How can they do this without parental support? I guess I'm, I'm struggling to figure that one out.
There are ways that teachers could be available, again, it may be, it may involve technology, so that wouldn't work for all the students. But in many cases, teachers are available and online to support the students. And if a student really was struggling, didn't have those options, the teachers would support the students back at school, in terms of getting some, getting that work done, so.
One of the key aspects of this is the work is not do the day they come back.
Yeah, so you can have a short-term assignment, you could have a longer-term assignment. There's an assignment, there are assignments that could go from, say, when you have your first snow day, to the end of the marking term, especially for some of your older students, because again, you're looking at some things that are gonna involve choice and interest for the students. There's one website I looked at where they include, and it's not that every student has to do this, but this is a choice, where they could go to a museum about history, and be able to pull together some information and write something about that experience. So not every student is gonna have the exact same experience all the time either, in terms of what they do on these days.
Okay, so some of the assignments would be done simultaneously with the teacher online, almost like they're holding class?
Yes, they could be, but again, that would depend if they had that access. Yeah, and if the power was on that day, like some of those things, so.
It's students that have internet access.
Right.
I think the most unique piece about this, what Dr. Smith has done, and it's, it's a lot different than some of the other proposals, that are those Blizzard bags and the things that do the next day. This is one of the most, cause we have looked at it for a couple of years, this has to be one of the most thoughtful plans. The ultimate goal is that kids can access the work without a parent, but I certain, we certainly understand what, what you're saying in the sense of, there might be some that-
I mean, that sounds wonderful in theory. But the reality is, you know, even like, like, for a second grader going online, not all second graders can even get online, as far as knowing how to get online anymore.
But we are working on that.
Good.
And I think, I think we've made some really great strides this year. Our elementary librarians have been working on that, we have the keyboarding program, so they're learning a lot more in terms of how to manage that on their own, so. And not just like the iPhone with the swiping, so, yeah.
And then, so if it's not, I understand if you can't get it done at home, that's not gonna be a requirement, but then would it be taking time out of the school day for them to get it?
It would depend, you know, some of the students who may require extra support, like a special needs student, they could get some support during that time, because it's gonna tie in. Anything that they're working on is gonna tie in with those kind of IEP goals that they're working toward. If it's reading, and you have reading support, it's all gonna tie into what they're working on anyway, so it would meld well with that. If there are students who don't have that level of support, there are times, most teachers provide some sort of time outside of their regular teaching time, that students can check in, whether they wanna check in for the older kids after school, or during a study time, or whether elementary students sometimes, like, I, I mean, I know at Thompson, there were kids that would say, hey, you know, can I come and get ten minutes of extra support, you know, at lunchtime around this math concept? Or I need some help figuring out exactly how to do this research piece for my fifth grade explorers project, or whatever. So there, there are options there as well. So there, you know, there are different kinds of things that we could do to help support students. And we would clearly outline all of that in terms of the committee, working with teachers, myself, principals, and I think parents on the committee as well, I mean, not a huge committee, but certainly, you know, all voices need to be heard.
And then for the children who have aides, like, you know, one-to-one aides, would they not be able to do any of it at home, and all of it would have to be done in school?
I'm gonna say that I didn't actually see what those students are doing, so I'm not gonna try to make something up for you. But I will look into that, I don't know, so you're talking about our students in our significantly severe programs, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure I would be very surprised if there wasn't some sort of plan that they have outlined, but I did not actually see that. As I said, some, when Jen and I went, some of the pieces were available online, and some, she, they aren't totally public at this point, so I can only get to what was public or what she had talked about that day, but that's a good question, so.
That's all my questions.
Yeah.
Helen, do you have any questions, or?
No, but I, but I would say that this seems to provide a good balance between the joy of a snow day, and, you know, the unexpected free time that all of us in our really busy society, you know, need from time to time. You're not looking at doing eight hours of work on a snow day, which I think would be, you know, I, I don't think that would be health, helpful or helpful for students. So I, so I like this, it's sort of a midway to, to meet students, and I, I'm, I'm interested to learn more and hear more about it. I do know my, my sister's a TA in New Hampshire, so they've been doing the Blizzard bad thing for a long time. I have some friends who live over in the Penn Tucket Regional District, and they had a Saturday, kind of a distance learning day, where they had all their staff online. Students were, you know, online with the staff, they were, they were doing, you know, not FaceTime, that wasn't the, but, you know, faces of teachers were available in homes. So we really do have a lot of, a lot of possibilities now. And I love the idea that, you know, a student could be encouraged to go to a museum and write about that. We just, we can't do that with the tightness of our, of our schedules and what's required in our frameworks that, you know, and how much it costs to take a bus down, but if we can encourage some students to do that, and give it as a choice, and just, I think it's the right direction to move in, and I'm, I'm excited to hear about it.
And I think it fits in, all of this fits in with, like I said, the 21st century learning. Like, how, how is education moving forward, and what are we trying to teach our kids? And you look at what the workforce is, it's very different than what it was before, in terms of you have to show appear, you have to sit at this desk, you have to, you know, do these kinds of things. And that's what we need to be able to prepare our students for, as well, because that's, that is the workforce they're gonna be entering, so.
Mr. Tracy, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with, I agree with what Helen said there. I guess I'd like to see a little bit more, more detail about it. But at the end of the day, the, the goal of this is not to use snow days, is that correct?
Well, I think-
So, so we don't go past that five days, that, that's the-
That would be, I think that would be up for discussion. I, I don't think that we've made any sort of recommendation or decision on that. But I think the big piece of it is, is when are students going to be learning more? Are they gonna learn more, taking that time in the winter, when, or October, or whatever, when, if we have a weather day then, versus those last few days in June?
Well, I agree with that, that point, but I'm wondering if all our students are gonna be learning this way in the middle of winter, on a very, mostly voluntary basis?
Well, no, I think it becomes an expectation, and I think that's something that we would have to work on, teachers, administrators, as a district, to make that an expectation, because it's gonna be a new thing.
What if the student doesn't do the work? He, he obviously is still gonna get, he's not gonna come back for that day in June.
Right, right. So I know what I did see in terms of Wakefield, is it's just like any other assignment. You know, this is the assignment you have, this is when it's due, and again, it's not due immediately, there will be support, and if you don't do it,
No, I'm definitely interested in hearing more about it, I think, I think it makes sense to, you know, put a little more meat on the bone.
And they, they actually, like, there were some questions and answers, like, what if the teacher is, is sick the day that the, you know, that it's an alternative school day? And it would be the same, many of the teachers have something prepared ahead of time.
It would have to be, it would have to be teed up, ready to go, I mean, she made the call at, what, two o'clock the day before?
Yeah.
Maybe it would have to be all ready to go.
Yeah, but if a teacher somehow, for some reason didn't, they would still be expected to get something ready, some sort of plan, if it was going up online or whatever, because just like if you're out sick, you have to have a subplan. You know, so there's-
So I think, very practically, if we think about next year, the current calendar has the fifth snow day on a Monday. That is not gonna be very popular. And so my suggestion would be, conservatively, you could say the first four are gonna be snow days. Anything beyond that would be alternative snow day, or Learn Anywhere. That could be a nice beginning rollout, so that you probably, given the numbers, would have zero, one, or two, not all five or six. You know, many schools have done kind of anything after three. My suggestion would be, look at the calendar, look at the, when you hit the Friday, and then have the conversation as a school committee, year to year, what would be the appropriate number of snow days, and what would be the appropriate number? You know, that, right now, I feel incredible pressure, because our last day is on a Thursday. It's the beginning of February. I mean, yesterday was an example of, we're gonna get in however we can get in, because we have one more day to make it to the end of the year, or we're going on that Monday. It would be wonderful to not feel the pressure of that right now, because that going from Friday to Monday significantly impacts camps and travel, and all that other stuff, so.
That's what I was just gonna mention.
So I would recommend, like, if it does, at least saying anything after four days would be this option. And that gives you an opportunity to have both the traditional snow day making up in June, but also to pilot this and see if this makes sense as a community.
So a couple of the letters for the superintendent's snow day challenge had to do with just this issue. And one of the, there were three young girls, I think third graders from Sargent, who wrote a letter, and they cited some of those things, we'll know when the end of school is, we can plan vaca- our family can plan to leave for vacation, we'll know if we can go to camps. And it, you know, it does become a real issue, again, the year I was at Thompson, and it was to the last day, that last Friday, I had parents out on the playground saying that to me. I don't know whether to take my child out of school and have them miss the end of fourth grade, or to send them to the camp, overnight camp that I paid for already, you know? So it does become an issue when you end up in those situations where you're going that far. So for people, I think, parents too, to be able to know that this is indeed the last day of school, would be really helpful.
We have a lot of high school kids that are employed, for example, at Brook School, they're counselors.
That's right.
And that's had a huge impact, and then we have some middle school kids, they're CITs, counselors in training, and it causes parents a huge amount of stress. But I think Dr. Price and Ms. Marks are a hundred percent right. Some districts right now are counting, doing all, any, any day that's a snow day, they do this, and others are doing after two, after three, after, and that's a really, I think, creative idea. And it's really nice of Dr. Smith to volunteer her time to work with us.
Well, I like also what Helen said, the fact that there's something incredibly magical about a snow day for a snow day's sake, that we, to take them all away would be, I think, unfortunate. But I do, I do wanna hear more about it. A couple of questions, you, you just answered it with Mr. Tracy a little bit, but the whole, you know, compliance, would we, you said the state doesn't require any percentages to complete work, or anything like that? The question would be, would that be something we would wanna put together or not?
That would be something that we would look at, and that would be part of the auditing piece. Like, you know, how successful is this? What is the compliance rate? What are, what are students getting out of this?
Right.
You know, is it working for them? Is what they're doing with these projects in the winter really proving that they're learning more and more invested than they are at the end of June? So all of those kinda things would need to be looked at.
And another thing that just came into my head, I'm, I think obviously the, the snow day challenge is one thing, but another thing that pops into my head is, it's like a one-day capstone project, like, you could just say, you're interested in, you know, how batteries work, I don't, so you do some thinking and learning and looking around about that, and put something together. There's a lot of ways you could make it very open, and give kids the chance to explore something. And also, I think it shows kids that you can use downtime, not just for watching TV or playing a video game or what have you, but exploring something that is exciting to you. Even though it's required.
That whole choice kinda ties into what you guys were talking about in terms of class rank.
Yes.
And kids not taking classes that might interest them, you know, focusing in on that, because they're worried about making sure they have the numbers for class rank. So it's all about providing that whole child an experience, you know?
And I don't think anyone's mentioned it, but I think this would be with the superintendent's challenge, it, it's a wonderful way to incorporate some of the things from the superintendent's challenge with our raised values around, well, if that student that you're having a hard time with, that you're trying to get some work, they might go shovel the neighbor's driveway or the-
Right.
There's chances for that.
No, that's, no, that's exactly right. So it's, I think it sounds like, obviously we'll talk about it more next time, but I-
So it's something you think we should form a committee and look at, put something together?
Right, I think, we should, I would like to get Mr. McDevitt to get a chance to comment, but it sounds like that's the direction we're going in.
Doesn't hurt to form a proposal.
Right, to work towards something like this.
You can obviously know later, right?
Right.
No, you can't.
No, I think it's excellent attitude there, Mr. Tracy.
So and when we get really advanced, one of the other essays that was written was about a bot, which is some sort of a robot. They can go to school for you when there's a snow day, or when you're sick, and I thought that was very creative, and that was another elementary school student, so.
We had a student actually do that at North High School.
Oh, really?
And I actually allowed that, that student to walk across the stage and graduate, and give, gave that student a diploma. The only problem was, the driver at the time was a ninth grader, and he drove it off the stage.
Oh, no.
So the end of graduation, last number, we made it like, some name that ended with a Z, the robot fell off the stage.
I just pictured Sheldon in The Big Bang Theory, I don't know if any of you have seen that, with the robot with his face on it.
That's great.
Well, I'm just, I'm just excited that we can capture some of these days with the seniors, who are like, I don't care if there's snow days, I'm, I'm graduating on such a snow day, right?
As you're talking with Dr. Smith and exploring this more, would it be possible to actually see the assignments? You know, how you showed the Google Classroom?
Yeah.
Like, I'd like to see what they're actually-
Yep, yep, I'm sure we can do that. Well, and I would say that in the high school right now, my sophomore, and I'm sure Helen's son as well, they get assignments through Google Classroom, there's a snow day, and they're like, ah, they added on another seventy math problems, here they are, yay me. I mean, they're, they're doing it at that level already. So it's more of the middle and elementary that I think would-
Well, I mean, again, as, as, you know, our students from the high school have expressed, when they miss a day, and if they're taking an AP class, or if they're getting ready for SATs or something, they miss a day of learning, they're missing a day of preparation for something that's important to them.
And they do feel that, yeah, I would agree, that's definitely in the high school, that is a fact, if not everywhere.
Exciting.
All right, so go forward, inform the committee, I mean, that's the general consensus, I think it's important that we give Ms. Marks a, a go forward. Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Marks.
All right, and then we have Dr. Price's mid-cycle review.
Lots of riveting reading for you.
Lots of excellent data presented in here.
Just quickly, I'll just present very quickly to you, the front page, the front here, is that, as you know, I have, we share two goals, and then I have two, two goals for a total of four goals. This is just evidence of moving in that direction. Chair Mabley and I thought it was pretty important for us to go through this now, as I have five remaining months, so as there's any mid-course correction or anything to focus on, now is a really good time to do it. And so just a few things, one of our major goals, you know, we've got an early childhood complex with, to be named later, that will be open in, in August, and that's a huge goal, and that's very exciting. As we've talked a ton about, we have reduced class size to only twenty-nine percent of our classes above the class recommended levels, which were up in the fifties only a few years ago. You know, just to think about the, the curriculums that we have been able to implement this year, we have a Eureka Math Program K through six, Foundations K two, Next Generation Science, case, grade seven, which is now six-seven, and Keyboarding Without Tears, K five. You know, just to stop on that, and it really is a credit to Mr. Gilligan and his team, there are some districts for whom all of those implementations would be like successful over five years. This is just this year. All of our core academic classrooms, our model classrooms, grades one through twelve, and that will be K through twelve, once we open the K. We currently have two thousand three hundred and forty student devices available to students. That's a tenfold increase in the last three years. We recognize nineteen educators at our P, our annual PTS, as we really work to make PTS matter. We've rolled out our Fit Money curriculum and benefit to fourth and fifth graders, and we raised eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars at the Lilith Bennett Benefit Dinner to support our innovative programs. The rest of the pages give details about each of those, I just thought I would highlight the first page.
The, the model classrooms, one through twelve, currently there are kindergartners in some of those classrooms, and those are all modern classrooms now? The, the current kindergarten classrooms are model classrooms, or are not?
So some are, most are not, and it was really a conversation with the PTO and budget. We will backfill those classrooms if a class is going to be in them next year.
Sure, okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep, perfect, and then the, the ones in the new school will be model classrooms.
Every single one.
Okay.
Not on the K side, not on the pre-K side.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
Just to be very clear. But we have allocated, we're not asking for any PTO support to do those two things. So next year, our work on putting in a projector and all of that will be the K building, that's our major budgetary outlaw, outlawing, and any classrooms that are gonna be backfilled, or changes are gonna be made, so that every core academic classroom, K through twelve. We then are starting to, as many of you know, we have many of our libraries now, and now we have to do about art, music, so that's about kind of our next steps. We also need to do a significant projector replacement at the high school, because some of those projectors are quite old. And so last year, I think we replaced thirty? Thirty, and I, and our goal is to do at least that many at the high school again, so we can get through all the classrooms. So that's our, that's our vision for the summer.
Does anybody have any specific questions or comments on the outstanding details?
No, but I appreciate all the detail.
Yes, no, I do too. I think it, well, it's impressive, and I, it was really important, I think, to show how much has been accomplished, and they all are tied to our strategic plan, and what needs to happen, and that, there's been a lot of work going on in all the right directions, so. Everybody all set?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Price.
Keep going, full steam ahead.
That's right.
Run through the tape.
You know, Mr. Mabley, there's one thing that I thought that was really cool in here that I'd just like to highlight, and it's again, really incredible work by Mr. Gilligan and his staff, soon to be Dr. Gilligan, on March fourteenth. Just the Medicaid spending, so if you just look right there, Mr. Mabley up there, the allocation of the Medicaid money, we've put that together. I, I just thought that was really cool. If you actually, you know, we've been talking, yeah. Yeah, we've been talking a lot about this, but it's pretty neat, right? So we've talked about all this, so we've got Foundations, grade two, we supported that in support with the Warden family, we were able to do that. And then you can see, we've bought curriculum libraries to really start piloting our, the Lucy Hawkins Reading. We've done stuff with computer science, which is something we've been doing, Project Lead the Way, the high school, seventh grade, science, and then the vast majority of the money went towards the Eureka Math- The high school, um, seventh grade, uh, science, and then the vast majority of the money went towards the Eureka Math outline, outline. Um, as you know, we were, uh, supported by the town to spend $250,000. I think we've gotten pretty close. But I do think it's important to see that, you know, we've been talking about all this and I just think looking at the Medicaid spending, you can see we, without that Medicaid work that Mr. Mealy, uh, and I, and, uh, town manager were able to make happen, we could never have done this. And here is just the example of, this is the POs and how we did it. It's excellent. I just thought it was good to see. Thank you. One piece of detail I wanted to show.
Good. Great.
All right, thanks, guys.
Um, all right, so we're moving on to old business. Um, and first start with a, um, 2018 budget update, guessing, Mr. Mealy?
Yeah, so it's actually a good thing in finance reporting when you can say that it's boring. We are, you know, there hasn't been much going on, uh, other than what we do every day. Um, so it, the report stays the same, other than Donna has given me the heads up that there might be some, um, situations coming up where, um, either some 45-day placements or, um, some move-ins that might impact us. So we'll keep you abreast of that, but other than that, we are still projecting that we will finish even for the year and not have to access the, uh, Special Education Stabilization Fund for the year.
My only request is that you just strike that sentence from your next report, please.
Okay.
It just scares me. It's like tempting fate.
At this time.
At this time.
We do not at this time.
You know, we know how that, that can turn so quickly.
Yep, it can.
I'm just trying to make, you know, it just...
Right, which is exactly why I was just talking about what Dawn had brought to my attention.
Right.
Yep.
So for a number of the schools, the expenses are more like 60%? Um, the, the overall is, is pretty much 50%, which is where we'd expect us to be, um, at, at the halfway point.
Yeah, and it's, it's because it's a mix. Because, um, some salaries, especially custodians and principals, are year-round. Um, and expenses generally get spent completely well before the end of the year. So that's why you'll see a school run higher than the, the place you are in the year. Expenses in some salaries.
Okay. Um, and another question I have, I know we did a whole bunch of things with photocopiers and changing codes and, and paper and all that stuff. Have you seen those, um, those expenses go down over the past year?
We'll be able to tell better at the end of this year. Um, it really, I mean, Mike has been tracking the amount of paper that has been saved. Um, so we'll get to see the impact of that.
I can't wait. I hope you'll bring in a big stack of paper and show us.
Well, the illustration will be that the height of the stack of paper that is saved compared to the Empire State Building.
Yeah, that's great.
Mike will do that when he does his technology report. But everyone is reporting there's a lot less paper in the recycling bins.
That's terrific, I'm glad to hear that.
That is, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Um, now we have the, um, school calendar, draft calendar that we started talking about last time. So...
So you guys had asked us to talk about January. I'd like to just tell you what we, we had a conversation with, um, the leadership team about that. Um, so a few things. Uh, there is a, a feeling, we talked about March. Um, the challenge with March is really it is MCAS. So for us to do something in March is going to be very tricky as we think about the different windows, especially as we're doing computer-based testing in MCAS and we're trying to make sure our technology team is in the school that's testing. So we're spreading out the testing across that window so that we can have the tech support. Um, the other thing that the, the principals, uh, and leadership team talked about is, you know, professional development for teachers in March is far less impactful than doing it in January. Um, as you get to March, you're getting closer to the end of the year. January is in the middle of the year. Um, it feels like that timing is better. Um, we did talk about whether November or December, but we do have that day, which is Election Day already. So to do two back-to-back is, is harder. Um, the only suggestion that they had, and I'm going to give it to you, um, was that rather than the Friday before Martin Luther King Day, maybe doing the Monday after the Super Bowl. That families might appreciate that. Um, I think that that is quite, uh, I don't think there are many parts of this nation that would be having that conversation. Given our recent run, it might be something that we should consider.
We'd like the snow day after, can you schedule that?
That happened a couple of times.
I have to admit, I was hoping that there would be any reason to have a delay that day, but there wasn't.
Well, I can give some anecdotal information. I happened to do, um, my daughter's library at Thompson on the Monday, um, this week after the Super Bowl. And there's 28 kids in that class, it's a big class. And I tell you, it was dead silent. And I kind of looked up at one point and I said, there's nobody talking. And the teacher's like, there's been no, everybody's out. The kids clearly stayed up and one boy was sitting on the little risers after he checked his book and his book was on his lap and the teacher and I were wondering if it was just going to slide off as loud as he goes asleep. So she said it was a, it was a quiet day.
So that was the principal's only suggestion because we feel that January is the appropriate time, so...
I love that suggestion.
It does mean that you don't get a four-day weekend.
I was going to say, a lot, I know a lot of people...
I don't think we want the four-day weekend then. That's what I, I feel. Maybe this year was just kind of a crazy beginning because we had a couple of snow days as well, but...
You're saying we don't want a four-day weekend?
Not that, not then.
In January?
I, I, I felt that way. I, I felt that the kids...
That's what started the discussion, I think.
Right, exactly.
And you guys found that way as, um, good as parents because the reason we put it on that day was, that was the feedback we were getting from parents.
So, I mean, for my family, we've loved it every year, having that four-day weekend. It's, it's a good, it's a good weekend to go up north and to, to get there before.
Probably just come back from winter break. And this year, winter break's even longer because of where Christmas and New Year's falls. Then you have snow days, which we've had the last couple of years, and so there's no momentum.
Right, I, I agree with the momentum problem. I have heard from several people, though, that they take that four-day weekend to zip to Disney, to do stuff that they can't do otherwise, and they like it.
I was discussing it with my son and he was fully supportive of the day after the Super Bowl.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I think that, the, the inconsistency, you know, the, the discontinuity of, of the school year happens anyway. So if you do, um, the 21st of January, then you have a four-day week and a five-day week and then a four-day week and then a five-day week and then vacation. It's just, you know...
21st is Martin Luther King Day.
Right, but, but you're going to be off the 21st anyway, right? So that's a four-day week. And then the next week is a five-day week and then you're going to have Super Bowl weekend. So you're going to go four-day week again. And then a five-day week just before vacation. My, my feeling about the couple of days before vacation, they're not much better than days in June, so...
I had someone else say the same thing, that when you, if you move to the day after the Super Bowl, then you're making a short week before vacation.
But we could, you know what, we could try it. We haven't done that before. We're throwing the superintendent out anyway, so nobody can be mad about it, so...
Wasn't this a right idea?
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we can...
We talked last time about the day before February vacation as an option. Is that still an option or...
So we did talk about that. Um, you know, one of the challenges, I will say, is that, um, the challenge for us is going to be management of that around faculty. Because as many of you know, uh, flights are a lot cheaper on the Thursday than on the Friday. So, you know, we're going to have increased number of faculty who would want to take that day. That, that's fine.
Well, that's Mr. Gilligan's problem.
But, but I'm, I'm just putting it out there as the conversation that we had. Um, and, you know, for instance, this year, I, I really do think John Doria was kind of a, a, a very important message for our teachers to hear around kind of the whole child. Um, and the work that we did around kind of the, the, the vertical alignment of Eureka, which we've not had time to do at the elementary level, was a very useful day for the district. So, you know, one of the things I want to remind us is that this is a day off for students, but it is not a day off for faculty. And it's a day we work very hard to plan to be a, uh, um, because we don't get time with teachers that can be this kind of really intense, hopefully transformational time. So just a reminder that that is why we do it.
Yeah, and all the joking aside, you know, when we were talking about it last time and you guys asked me about it, Mr. Triscy, your comment was, that was a big sign. Uh, because it did cause me a little bit of, uh, consternation thinking about, because it's such an important day. And timing, although it could be adjusted, you know, in January, February, but it's a really important day as we head into, you know, the spring and MCAS and everything else.
I think, I don't know if it's Helen or Holly, but, you know, this, this year definitely seemed like, because we had those two snow days, it was, it was tough to get started, but at the end of the day, we can't control that. I mean, it could snow in February as well. So I'm just wondering, maybe we should just keep it like it's been like that for the last few years. I, I don't know, I, you damn if you do, you damn if you don't, but...
Um, I do have something for Mr. McDevitt because he knew that we were trying to finalize this today. And it is very important we finalize this today, um, because people are waiting for camps, et cetera, like we just said, believe it or not, for, for planning for next year vacations. Um, Andrew says, um, "Good evening, I apologize for not being present, but a work commitment has delayed me out of state. I am in support of the calendar. While a March professional development day, uh, might help to break up the month after reviewing the MCAS dates and evaluating the impact of, on teaching and learning, I am in support of the extended Martha Luther, Luther, Martin Luther King Junior Day weekend with a PD on Friday."
I took him on that category too.
Any other comments on that? Um, you're talking about doing the, um, putting in the, uh, early release stuff later, right?
As soon as you have voted the calendar, we will bring back the early release and bring it to you.
Um, in terms of dates and half-days and all that, are there any other comments on that? From anybody? Because we still also have the question that, um, Ms. Picard brought up about, um, the Columbus Day, currently listed as Columbus Day being either added to or changed to, I'm not sure what I remember.
I just have one question before we get to that. And so, right now, still ending on the Monday, dependent on whether we adopt the alternative learning. Um, what happens if we don't adopt it? We're just going to...
We're going to end on the Monday.
On the Monday, are we all comfortable with that?
If we, if we have five snow days.
Right, right.
Mr. Gilligan is going to be under incredible pressure not to call the fifth snow day.
I think Gillie's tougher in Hillsdale School.
No, I have to obviously tell you though, the elimination of...
Burger clock.
The elimination of the...
That bus is like coming, guys.
I'm trying to listen to you.
I am as well.
I mean, the only, this is the only part of the job that I feel slightly anxious about for next year, but, you know, hopefully we'll have some good weather. Um, but that being said, the elimination of the holidays that we, that we had, you know, believe it or not, bringing the staff back the two days before Labor Day, that's almost the equivalent of having kids. Because if we had those professional development days like we used to in the old days or in the past, those would be spread out through the course of the year.
Right.
Um, and this is a really early date compared to most communities because...
The 24th?
24th.
Yes, I mean, the years that we had all those other things, we were pushing, there was, we went to the last day of June one year with the Good Friday and we've gone close to the last day of the year. Um, so hopefully, we have a successful proposal coming from Lorraine that may be a possibility. And, but it's always lousy to have to come back on that Monday.
But you're, you're correct. I mean, if we have five snow days, that's, so, but what are the alternatives?
Even if you move it and you have six days, I mean, right now, we're, we've already had five, we could have six.
But Andover was at, what, seven or eight?
Yeah.
No, but what are our, how would we, what are other ways to roll it back?
Are there any? No. Which, but what I'm saying is five is just an arbitrary day because it's kind of the amount that we normally do, so, you know...
But as we saw from the, it's pretty accurate, as we saw from the...
Right, it's a pretty good average, right.
But we also have this situation that I had talked about with the, 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 the alternative snow, school, school days.
May I make a motion to approve the calendar as it's presented here?
Is there any second? I think we have to discuss the Indigenous Peoples' Day issue first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought you were going to do the, the actual dates themselves first.
Um, we could do the dates and then discuss this.
I withdraw my motion.
Fair enough. All right, um, so, Ms. Picard, you had brought that up last time and I just, if you can speak to that a little bit, whether you're saying to replace it, add it as well, what you're thinking?
I would add it to it. I mean, there's a, there's a body of people that worked very hard to have Columbus Day put on, um, originally and there was, there was significant pushback to that, so I wouldn't want to, um, eliminate that. But I think there's a number of communities around the country that have, um, adopted having a slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, recognizing that, you know, that, that moment of first encounter had many, um, many impacts for the folks that were here before and the folks that have, that have come since. So I think that, um, you know, there's been a, there's been a groundswell of interest in really recognizing the, the experiences of Indigenous peoples' past, present, and future. So that's, that was my suggestion is that we add that in there.
Um, any discussion on that?
I would just say, um, you know, I hear what you're saying and I've heard this argument before as well. Um, I think it's a little beyond the scope of what we're being asked to do here right now. You're asking to really rename a holiday for the town of North Andover. And it's probably something that should be, first of all, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying maybe it should be a separate agenda item where you're hearing from some people, but if people really want the school committee to change that, they should probably come here or weigh in on it. Not to, um, minimize what you're hearing. But I also think that's something that, that the town should consider. I, I, I think we're, we're supposed to just, um, again, approve the school calendar and, you know, the, the, the name of Columbus Day, um, I think is, I think it's beyond the scope of what we're being asked to do.
Yeah, I can definitely understand that and I think, you know, perhaps we can continue this conversation at another time. It just seemed, you know, an, an opportunity to, um, to begin the conversation and we can continue it, you know, at another time in different places.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's part of the school curriculum now or if, if they, they talk about that.
So it's, it's got to be part of the frameworks, right? I mean, when our students go down to, to Plymouth Plantation, they stop at the Wampanoag, Wampanoag Village. Um, so there's lots of, there's lots of places, touch points in the curriculum, um, that this could be included. Um, I think we're, we're well beyond just the Nina, the Pinta and the Santa Maria and we really just need to, you know, embrace that.
World Trade Cup is exploring the explorers, it's a very comprehensive unit. The inter-hemispherical exchange of people, goods, sugar, the trade system.
As long as you have anything. Um, my only comment is I would want it to have, I, I, I'm not against it in any way either. I don't know that it's part of what we need to do here. I do think it would be something that we would not, if we put it on our calendar, I would want to make sure it's something that's talked about, um, and that the teachers buy into and touch on. I would agree, um, back in my day, we did a lot of stuff about the Nina, the Pinta, the Santa Maria and all that. I can see that nowadays we don't. It's very much not talked about. Um, so there's an opportunity to go further than that if we wanted to. But I also think of it as something that would be a community-wide. From a lot of the research I did, the towns that have, and the states, there's a couple of states that have adopted it statewide. Um, some are slash, some are replacement. Um, I think that would be a community discussion that we should look at. And I, maybe, maybe there's a, we're talking, you brought up Holly last time about doing a new survey about, maybe we ask the question there to get, again, I'd want some kind of community input.
Again, I mean, I just, I think it's an opportunity to bring things up, start a conversation that we can continue, you know. It certainly shouldn't hold us up from making these decisions and the half-days can be named and the, you know, people can make their camp plans.
I wonder though, to David's point is if it's a town decision because we're giving a day off based on a, a holiday that our town or our state recognizes. So I don't know if it's in our purview or not.
I mean, let's be honest, in Columbus State, it's become like an Italian, and as an Italian-American, I mean, it's become a, a, a source of pride for Italian-Americans. Though there's probably other Italian-Americans, we could probably, you know, names that they go after, but...
Well, it started as a source of pride for Italian-Americans. That's how Columbus Day was named.
It's still, it's still, there's still a lot of, of parades around that. Um, there, there used to be a, an annual breakfast here in the Maric Valley that has not, um, been active for some time. But, um, I think it's worth having this discussion. I think we should approve the calendar and maybe it's a conversation to have with, you know, the board of selectmen, you know?
Thank you. No, thank you, I'm glad you brought it up.
So I will make a motion to approve the calendar as it's presented, um, in front of us here, who's this draft?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Triscy, second by Ms. Picard. Uh, do we have to do a roll call? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, okay, yes. I already read that, okay.
If he was here, he'd vote yes.
Yes, because he, he basically said yes. Because that's what he said he was interested in, is keeping it the way it is, okay. But it is 4-0. Um, any public comment?
Mayor, if you would.[1760.74]
That's why you're here, right?
We can't say no, we've invited public comment, and you're public.
You never ask a question.
And the rest of our public ran away, we tried to beg them to come, too.
So, Dr. Price, you should set the timer, right, for three minutes.
Yeah, I, I just had two comments about your mid-cycle review, Dr. Price. So, sort of the good news and the bad news. The good news is, of course, we've made dramatic progress, it's amazing to me how far we've come in really a short amount of time, although I would say that a lot of, and you, you've acknowledged this in remarks you've made in the past, a lot of this has really been short-term progress based on a long-term amount of effort that's gone into this for a number of years, and, you know, Mr. Gilligan, and Mr. Mealy, and others have been here working this for a long time, but it really is great to see the results of all that progress, we've really come a long ways in a short amount of time, so that's great. That's the good news. The bad news is, you've set the bar pretty high for us. That's going to be a real challenge, because I think what you really did is provided some leadership for us to really make a lot of this stuff happen. I mean, we could have addressed these problems anytime in the past if we wanted to, and we didn't, for whatever reason, I don't know why we didn't, and you came and you said, "Let's, let's do it, let's just get on with it." And that was, I, probably what we needed to start working, some of these things like class size, technology, all that sort of stuff, that really now you've helped us move forward with, so, while that's been a great help for all of us, you've set the bar pretty high on the leadership side for us, so.
I'm not worried.
Almost Dr. Gilligan is going to have a real challenge here to sort of keep up with, keep up with that, and that's been a wonderful gift that you've given our community, so thank you so much for doing that.
And I, I, my comment would be, I'm not worried for two reasons, I think that our town manager has been an incredible partner in this work, and, you know, and I have the utmost confidence in the team that is going to be leading this district starting July 1st. I, I, and I, and I think they will tell you, I think all three of the assistant superintendents here will say that all of this work is all of us together.
Right, right, no, it's, it's definitely the case, and I, like you, I wake up every morning grateful for our town manager, so, just saying, but, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. School committee member emeritus.
And that wasn't even probably three minutes, actually.
I think not.
2:41.
2:41, even with my.